For which is stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reviewed the agenda and will proceed as presented. I don't believe there's any previous public comment. Old business. Oh, is, uh, is there any public comment on non-agenda items? Public comment?
He said you have arena on the phone. I was just making sure I was doing type of codes here.
I can try here once quick. We've got a classified matrix and hiring, old business.
Uh, so what you have in front of you is with the, with the SARS money added in steps for them, as well as an addition for the people that are topped out, that last part of it is, um, twenty-five since each year past twenty, all part of employees.
Any board discussion? Is there any public comment? Public comment? Any board discussion or motion?
I will move to agree the new classified salary matrix as.
Mike moved to approve the new classified salary matrix as presented, same second motion. Is there any public comment? Public comment? Board comment? Mike made the motion to approve the new salary, classified salary matrix as presented. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. I'm gonna pause here. Do the students have presentation tonight?
They're not gonna give their reports. I mean, you can, you can move items if you need to, if that's what you're wanting to do. If you want to move them.
Might be kinder. I mean, you can hang out till ten o'clock with us if you want to. Why don't you girls go in?
We're representing the senior class. And we're just gonna be telling you about our classes. So first up, we have history. We've made some trips down to the courthouse to register to vote, and they explained what voting means. We also worked with Corbett Harrington to put together a mock trial, which we all participated in. And it was really an educational activity that gave us a close-up look on how the court system really works.
In foods class, several of us seniors are in foods. And lately, we have been making cookies to fundraise for the girls going to National F C C L A. We have learned about all the necessary nutritions like vitamins, carbs, lipids, and fats. We also did a few projects to go along with them.
Um, in child development, we did story hour every Thursday. And sometimes we'd go to the library or go to the preschool to help Miss Amy out with the kids, or big projects or something like that. And we also went and hung out with the daycare kids. And, uh, child development has been a great learning experience because we get to work with the preschool and daycare kids one-on-one while learning new things about each age group. After doing some classroom work, it was neat to put that into perspective of the real life of being around all the kids.
In English, we worked with Eric Lovick, and he has given us the opportunity to help out with the Ecolica Eagle newspaper. We did quite a few of the weekly articles, and we actually did a, we each did a research article that was posted in the Ecolica Eagle as well.
In advanced biology, they have memorized and studied the muscles and bones in the body. Furthermore, they have each made presentations to present to the class about certain systems in the body. That it, the students, they learned about the eyes, ears, nose, and DNA. As of right now, they are learning about bugs.
In physics, earlier in the year, we learned about all the forces that are applied to an object. We have also learned about Newton's laws of motion and projectile motion. As of right now, we are covering the concept of momentum, work, and power.
Aside from all of those classes, a lot of us participate in school to works at Roots, the hospital for grade school teachers, and I think that's all that we do, right? And then, uh, we also do shop classes, business or accounting classes, and online courses. And, uh, our class as a whole has completed over thirty-six college credits this year alone. That is also counted on our high school transcript.
That's a nice job.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, we'll go back to old business, plus, uh, classified salary matrix. Alright. Your hiring considerations.
So you guys have the list of, um, all of our classified positions there and all of the, what their position will be next year as far as based on the new stars, uh, the new salary schedule. And, uh, just the key part on the first page there, it says that this preserves his right to change employment positions affecting employers' duties, assignments, supervisor. We feel comfortable making that recommendation for these. Their official position may change a little bit, but we don't want them to go job-sticking in the meantime.
Any board discussion? Public comment? Public comment? Any board discussion or motion?
Just a question. Because there's five of us here, and for more members potential, only four of us can vote. Is that fine?
That's the majority.
Correct.
So it's not as the majority.
I have to abstain.
Yeah.
Yes.
Or you can, yes.
Do them individually.
Or we can do it individually if we need to.
No, I'll just abstain.
Yeah, thank you.
I will move to approve the classified hiring as presented.
I'll second that.
Mike made motion to approve the classified hiring as presented for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. The second motion, is there any public comment? Public comment? Any board comment? Mike's made the motion to approve the classified hires as presented for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. The second motion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign.
I abstain.
So what you have in front of you is we've, um, the MOU we've worked on, we do know M E A days will be M F P E days, will be part of our calendar. Um, and so what those Fridays are, but the details of it are laid out.
Did you choose the Fridays on the calendar?
No, did not. That'll be, that'll be the committee.
And you took away two days for M F P, so we're down to seven instead of nine? So you think we're off stop, you didn't have any days concerning M F P E days?
We only, we have, we have six.
You're talking about the MOU?
Yeah.
Seven.
Well, count the other please.
Four, five, six, two halves make seven. If I'm kinda right.
I didn't, just second, I, okay, so you have the Friday before.
Not the Friday before, we have one day before.
One day before.
Correct.
Um, one Friday a month, which is four, so that's five. The end of the year is six, and the two M F P E days would be seven and eight.
There's no M F P E days in here.
Right, but they're part of our professional development days, they're counted in the maximum of seven days.
So, um, then you go back to, um, like your parent-teacher conferences are not a professional development day.
They're not what?
They're not professional development day.
They're not changes.
Ah, so then what happens after four o'clock? Cause our contact is eight to four.
Correct, that is parent-teacher conferences, that was part of that conversation. So they're not professional development.
But it's not because they're outside of our work day, they're outside of our work days. I guess maybe I misunderstood something along the way as to, um, we would have two hours, so we would have a total of four hours, which should be not quite a full P I R day. Cause our contact says eight to four. And I guess I was under the assumption from four to six would be part of our P I R days, it would be four hours.
I guess I was not under that impression.
And I, I don't know about the other committee members, that were there, what their impressions were.
That was very interesting. I think we're part of our professional development time, they always had that in the past.
Correct, we had that conversation that they were, I mean, but they're not truly professional development.
In your opinion.
In that conversation, so.
Every other school counts in as professional development time.
Not every other.
Okay, the majority that I've ever had any contact with do. And if we're expected to be at that time outside of our work day, then you gotta call it something, not just don't need a time that we're showing up. So professional development time is appropriated. As a nation, I think.
I guess my question is, what happened with legislation with that M F P? Cause I did not.
They locked him off.
They locked him home. So that would be, you are still part of her.
Okay, that's why I did not, cause they, at one point, they were gonna get, you had to observe them, but you didn't have to count them or some, what?
Yeah, that's the school district to determine what they were trying to do during that time.
So the MOU needs to be amended? That's unfortunate.
And this does totally outline our professional development days, right? This is, except for what we're doing on those days. I guess one of my other thoughts was, um, and I'm sorry if I'm out of line with order of how to do things, but, um, we did agree through I V B to sign an MOU to put the P I R plan into our collective bargaining agreement for one year, but in my opinion, it is incomplete. We don't have, we have, say, somebody can't make up or can't attend the P I R days in October now that they're still there because of sports or the things, the, either the administrative rules of Montana code says we must have options for them to make that up. Otherwise, they are deducted pay. I don't really feel at this point that this plan is completely solid enough. I mean, I'm not against signing it when it's completed. At this point, I don't feel it's complete enough to be signed. We don't have options for makeup for the October days. We don't have incorporated the two P I R days now that in October. And then, of course, we have the issue from two to six. Or four to six, I won't say two to six, four to six for future conferences. I think our committee should get back together and some of the five Fridays that we believe attending as well as the other things outlined in the Montana code, whichever one it is.
Can you clarify for me? Was it this, would need to be have it in writing somewhere this year that they had to make up days if they were gone on those?
According to the, I mean, I'm trying to say administrative rules fifty-five, fourteen, something, one ten or something like that. It's not regular P I R days.
Right, just M F P.
We used to put the M F P.
And we always at the bottom of the plan say hat, say, uh, teachers may go to the O P I teacher portal. We would like them to find classes in the in-Unit for all, or blah, blah, blah. So there's always like a paragraph at the bottom, so.
I might just say if they don't return, they will be deducted if they really pay.
Right, I just have the deducting, but I was just making sure.
Yeah, there's a paragraph always at the bottom.
At the end of the P D thing.
Yeah, and we always put options if they can take through approval with administration.
Got it, thank you.
And I have some samples in there from a past.
Is there any board discussion? I'm sorry, I forgot to tell you too.
I got enough if you can.
Is there any other public comment? Public comment? Board discussion? Promotion?
I move to table the MOU until some of the kinks can be worked out with the committee.
Second motion.
Stefan made a motion to table the MOU until the committee can meet and work things out. Same second motion, is there any public comment? Public comment? Stefan made the motion to table the MOU until the committee can meet and work things out. Same second motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
I, I do have a question. What was the code for the P D days? You told it to us last time.
Fifty-five, ten, something.
The Montana code.
M C A.
Oh, I have to hold that one up.
Okay.
You had it last time.
I have it down somewhere on my phone, I will find it for you while we're sitting here today.
Okay.
Um, more of it, I believe, they're two different things, they almost say the same thing, but the administrative rules talks about the deduction of pay if you don't have options to make that. And.
I just, I remember I read that Montana code when you pulled it last time, and it tells you exactly what is considered a P D day, so I was wanting to read that.
Yeah, I have it.
Again. But we can move on, I just, it'd be good for everybody.
There's a, there's a, there's a Montana code and a bigger outline of the administrative.
Motion carries. Can I ask a question on it, please? Are you guys wanting the I V B committee or the professional development committee? To look at this in mind?
I mean, we agreed to sign the MOU. I mean, that's part of I V B. I would just say, once we get this set up, and everybody agrees, we sign, you know.
That's what I'm saying, so this, this needs to go to the P D, that's what I'm asking, okay? Just so I'm clear on that.
Extracurricular hiring considerations. Mr. Cathy?
Uh, so yeah, we have a couple, we have got, received a couple of applications last week. We just have not got those interviewed done for, um, athletic director. Um, so at this point, we have the upcoming season, um, and I have, yeah, I've been in the process of meeting with all of the head coaches. And so, uh, three recommendations we feel like are needed at this moment, um, based on application and based on summer, um, for head volleyball and head football. And, um, as well as moving, uh, junior high football into the assistant, um, high school football coaching.
Is there any board discussion? Branson, is there a way to click on those so that whoever's here can see, like, the spot that we're on? Yeah.
Up one.
Thank you. I just thought it might. Is there any public comment? Public comment?
Is there junior high coach thing?
No, not yet.
For, I mean, for football.
Well, we do have, we have the volunteer that's been on staff, um.
Is, is Jamie supposed to be junior high football coach and not assistant football coach?
High school.
Oh, he's going to high school. So we don't have junior high football.
Looking at him.
We have an application. We do have an application for that, we also have had a conversation with, um, Southeast Electric about their work schedule, um, to see as well, to make sure if there are people out there that want to apply that can. So.
I was, I read it wrong and thought Jamie was still under, this junior high. Maybe you said something.
So we don't. So.
Is public comment right now? You want to say something?
Just call it one. I mean, Rusty has, just Rusty has to reapply?
My understanding is he volunteered, so he wouldn't have to reapply.
Don't we have his name down somewhere, though?
Hmm?
We hired, we hired Diddly, I thought we put him down for bowl.
No, obviously, he's, he goes on our volunteer list, uh, on that part of it. I just not, uh, might want to communicate that, cause I, I think he's under the assumption that cause he's worked here for so long, with them that he's coming in that role. So you might want to communicate that with me. That's what Jamie, sorry, I don't know his name, just a second. Just my, my, my name, that.
So if they're volunteer to help with the team, did they get traveled to weigh into the team?
Yeah, as long as they're fingerprinted and stuff.
They get to travel with a bus.
Rusty did everything, yeah.
He drove it.
Yeah, he drove it, he coached it, he.
Any other board discussion or motion?
Don't our head boys and girls basketball coaches want to know, is there gonna be that before summer? So they can work with the kids over the summer or not?
Um, in that, I mean, with our board meeting on, in June, I have meetings with the basketball coaches this week, so.
We're, it's on the agenda to discuss having a training in further, on a day where I'd be in town.
Oh, sweet, yeah. One less trip.
I will move to hire the coaches as presented, I'll second that.
Mike made the motion to approve the hires as presented for coaches. Stefan seconded, is there any public comment? Any public comment? Board discussion?
So we're still looking for assistant volleyball coach and a junior high volleyball coach?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mike made motion to accept the recommendation for hiring coaches as presented. Stefan seconded motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Student activity handbook.
So with, uh, updated pieces, it is, so, uh, updated pieces.
Got it.
Working, updated pieces and whatnot, it is in front of, uh, with that meeting before, um, our work session before to go over it, um, again, but all, all pieces are out of that.
Is there any board discussion? Is there any public comment? Public comment? Board discussion or motion?
I will move to approve the activity student handbook as presented. Yes, I did, yep, sorry.
That's okay, I'm just.
Yes.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Mike made the motion to approve the student activity handbook. Same second motion, is there any public comment? Public comment? Mike made the motion to approve the student activity handbook. Same second motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Jumpstart, second reading.
Uh, so the policy is, um, we've kind of worked through some pieces, but, uh, piece we built from last month that we were unsure of was that we have to specify specifically devaluation tool in the policy, and we don't. Um, and so that actually assists us a little bit. Uh, so policy, again, opens up the door for us to, um, do pre-grade through third grade jumpstart during the summer. And it gives us a way to, um, establish who, who is eligible for that as well.
Thank you. Is there any public comment or board discussion?
I guess the only thing, I would say, that has nothing really to do with the policy, have we found people for sure that are interested in maybe rotating through the summer to do this program?
So our original conversation, yes, but until we have the policy, yeah, until we know we can do it.
Say it for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I'm just curious.
I'm going to approve the second reading and adoption of policy handful on twenty-one sixty-five.
I'll second that.
Is there? Alright. Sam made the motion to approve the second reading and adoption of policy twenty-one sixty-five. Is there any public comment? Public comment? Board comment? Sam made the motion to approve the second reading and adoption of twenty-one sixty-five. Stefan seconded the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Calendar.
We have a calendar that was built by the calendar committee. It is in front of you. Um, the question just comes down to if, um, potentially. The question just comes down to if potentially looking at adjusting days for December and looking at what our end date is. Or we can go with calendar. It was collectively built. So looking at moving, going potentially, you could have a conversation about going to school twenty second, um, twenty third and twenty fourth. And picking up a Friday and ending school a week earlier, but.
You would go on Christmas Eve?
Well, I have two Fridays. I have twenty seconds.
So it's just a matter of if that's a discussion we want to have with the community or if we want to go with the recommendation of the, uh, the community did have input. In that conversation. I mean, they had, uh, we surveyed the community. Uh, we, there was, oh, I don't know, four or five different options out there. The option to potentially end earlier was not presented, so I don't know if that would have garnered different comments.
So in April, we're still missing.
No, okay, so I gave you new ones. I'm sorry. You have new ones in front of you. Yes, I downloaded it and saved it. That's true.
Then in October, from our last meeting, I had circled like the third. That was a discussion to go a full week that week. So we're missing like a day. October third, Friday.
It is here. I'll, hold on. Just give me like two seconds and I'll connect the new one.
This one, yeah.
It's a, she's, she said she.
The one that was on the table.
Cause they were like short weeks or something.
We were not short days.
No.
Nope.
Okay.
That's. The one in here is wrong.
All right, Branson, you mentioned that.
We will just have to be very careful when we build our schedule that those lunch minutes don't change or that'll affect.
Correct. I, yeah, I put those down.
This. So we just have to be very careful when making that. When we build that schedule, I cannot. So is there enough time for lunch right now?
As long as it doesn't, as long as we don't add minutes to recess or lunch. I did the exact same.
If there's enough time.
Yep, the four through six plow through their food, I feel like. I guess you could speak to them more if you're in there, but I feel like they.
Super Cooper.
Well, I mean, they can go, they get lunch and then recess. So if they're eating longer, longer, it's like then they catch them to their little recess time a little bit.
Oh, sure.
I mean, they can make that choice of which.
We cut their recess time, not their lunch time.
And the littles, quite often, if it's like something that's difficult to serve, it will be another five, will wait five minutes or whatever because they aren't as restricted on hours.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Everybody has plenty of time to get all the seconds they want, but.
Now it's. Is there any other board discussion?
If we're discussing the professional development days again, can we really settle on a calendar?
I was just looking at that myself.
Well, you can't because you don't have any of those stuff. Yeah. I mean, unless you're gonna change the calendar.
They're not included in this calendar.
Yeah, they were, these are just school days.
But usually the professional development are incorporated into this support's finalized.
Right, so the.
Well, the P I R purple things.
Right, so the biggest thing I feel like is Misses already had a couple of phone calls from parents about school days. And I have to turn something into workers comp to know what days we're on. So those are kind of my only big, they want to know what days we're in. I have to have that as part of renewals, so. We typically have it approved by now, so that matters unless we're gonna change school days, not professional development days.
You know, you can already add the October ones in there because you know they're there.
But those are PD days. That's what I'm saying. I, we're talking, I'm talking just school days, just strictly. Yes.
So instead of saying like to be determined, I just like sure that means.
Oh, gosh, should I leave that on there? Sorry. Yeah.
So we need to, I think that's a little. Is the hundred and fifty three days including the three days in December that you, I, I, I can't remember.
Because at one time the calendar said a hundred and fifty. And maybe.
Says a hundred and fifty three.
No.
Hundred and fifty three.
Okay.
A hundred and fifty three is this.
There are a thousand ninety seven student hours, which are seventeen hours over.
And whatever I printed out didn't either print correctly or?
No, I just reattached it.
Oh, okay.
She accidentally attached the wrong.
I attached the wrong one.
Pressure on minutes. And whether pressure on minutes changing the time.
Oh, yeah. So that is in here. So this is the eight o'clock start time.
And it's fine. We looked into it.
And I looked into aggregate hours and we're going aggregate hours.
Okay, that was.
That was what Carol was saying about the lunchtime. As long as you have the same lunchtime for everybody next year, your number of hours.
So you need a thousand eighty, you mean we have a thousand ninety seven built in?
Correct.
Turnover in pastures, did we have like snow days built in?
Yes.
And we don't have that.
You do have two days.
Yeah, two.
Oh, you've had an optional makeup day, is that what you're saying?
We have. Well, we did ours. We had more Fridays. Yeah, and we had that committee meeting. We had more Fridays.
That's you guys. I wasn't there.
Remember, because we added in.
You have one there.
You have the one in January.
We have the thirtieth and then the hopefully week. I thought there was three for summer season.
Four.
Three, four.
And September.
You got September, October, January and April.
Okay, I thought that.
Two five day weeks.
I thought we had three five day weeks for summer season. That's why I was. But why do people still have four days?
Oh, yeah, it is a four day week because it's the holiday.
It's the Easter holiday.
Yeah, Easter break.
September is Labor Day.
I was just meaning full five.
Yeah, there's one too. There's a.
Full five, we only have like one, right?
Two.
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 October and.
January.
We really did put the fifteenth.
The fifteenth of.
May, sorry.
I mean, that just goes back to you guys' this conversation about Branson.
We did have that discussion, like it's a lot easier to have your students at awards and whatnot.
Correct, but you know, I've kind of voted on it. I can't. I, I can't.
I thought we did. I wasn't. It was just there.
Who is on? I looked.
You know, Master, are you, are you gonna vote on this today? Is it gonna try it out to help those this year? I mean, because this will be the first year you've done, but is it worth the pain of having to second the last week of school?
Actually, just the way Mr. Kathy's, we've made it mandatory. Like they have to come the fifteenth to check out and practice.
It, I am.
As a, as a school.
Basically, you beat my ear on that.
But who else?
That's what I'm like, I'm like.
Correct.
DB, Mike and I.
Well, you're on the calendar.
And I think I'm still.
Yeah.
If you add the fifteenth.
You're not on professional development.
Twenty second, we have another December, one other day.
Always keep date carriers, let's just say the. Let's just say the contact.
We should have changed that when you guys re, I should have changed that when you guys re. It should be you two, it should be you two on legislative.
Oh, yeah.
But we didn't change it. I realized that now that you said that.
Alright, is there any public comment?
I guess I was sorry.
It would be nice to have the professional development days, that are the happy days on Fridays, put on the calendar. So that we can plan. So to finish the calendar, but like we're missing some parts.
And I guess mine is just since from what I looked at it for, my, and it's changing just a little bit. I remember when we went to the first four, four day weeks and added Fridays. We were required to have a hundred and eighty days, which in recent hours have changed that. But even this year, we're dropping off two days, two and a half days from our calendar from last year by adding eight minutes to our calendar. Eight minutes a day is not going to help me get a lesson taught. So I'm losing another two days of educational opportunities or activities I could do with my students to further them along in their educational processes. To meet the standards of Montan and the expectations. We've gone from, like I said, a hundred and eighty days down to a hundred and fifty three. That's, if you go four days a week, that's two months of school. And not to say that we can't get things covered, it just takes away some of the other stuff in some ways. And it makes you push and you push and you push to get the kids, to get all the material they need to meet the requirements of the state of Montana.
Is there any other public comment? Board discussion?
Is the calendar committee gonna meet back together?
I think we need to. Just to work out the, the bugs that are in it. I think we need to.
Could you do like a calendar committee and a professional development on the same day maybe and work together?
It's not.
They are not the same.
They're not.
Not as far as the board is concerned.
It used to be the same.
We reorged it night though, so.
That's something to think about.
It'll be all in tonight.
My board put it.
Yep.
Brian?
Well, just simple question. If, how, how much different is this calendar from last year? I mean, not looking at last year's calendar. You're saying this time, you, uh, you know, pointing to many more days different from this calendar from last year?
Is there any?
You got that?
I'm trying to find, I'm trying to find with our, with all the numbers on it. Hundred, I have a hundred fifty seven, Branson. Does that sound right?
Four less days.
Hundred fifty seven.
Be four, four less days, Brian. Compared to last year's.
Hundred ninety, hundred ninety hours. We have more hours built in this one.
More hours but less days.
When you say you have more hours built in, it doesn't mean differently.
Right, I was just, I was just saying to compare those two numbers.
Because I'm not gonna get a whole first grade math lesson done in seven minutes here and seven minutes there and, you know, so we're missing a whole week of school.
Yeah, we missed an whole week this one, a four day. That's it. Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you.
So do we table, are you ready?
Is there, uh, any other board discussion or motion?
We need to table the calendar and have the calendar committee to get back together and bring it back to the board. Do you second that?
Sam made the motion to table the calendar and have the calendar committee meet and bring it back to the board. DB seconded the motion. Is there any public comment? Public comment? Any other board discussion? Sam made the motion to table the calendar, send it back to the calendar committee to bring it back to the board. DB seconded the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. I think the next item is supposed to be stripped.
It is.
Uh, it's close to consent agenda.
Consent agenda. Um, there are a couple of annual contracts in here and I apologize on MHSAs and your guys' IDI didn't total. But we have the four boy sports, four girl sports, and then I did include Van Inquire, which I listed before our hiring, but, um, if something ever happens, like last year, we paid it and if we don't end up having teachers, I just request it back by August first. So MHSAs is in here. And then Prairie View Curriculum Consortium is something we've been a part of for as far as going along before I've been here. We use them for curriculum services, library services and some other things. And they do a lot of professional development in the area. So their annual contract is in here. And then, um, Whitely has been our auditor for a number of years and our three-year contract expired. And so this is just a one year for them to come catch us back up. So this will be for last fiscal year's audit. And they will come at the end of May. I, I did put out an R Q to try to get other bids for audits and no luck, which isn't surprising. And a lot of schools are having really hard time finding auditors, especially if they want to travel to them. So, um, that contract is in here as well. And then the normal consent agenda, reading minutes and financials.
What are we buying concessions for in? Uh, what's, what did you want?
Not a page, but a page number. You're in the just, just page three. So I'm guessing that the kitchen bought the concession food. Were you, to you back of public schools?
Yeah, oh, we bought leftover concession food.
That's what the kitchen used it. And as we near end of year, um, to make everything balanced between the general funds. I, I do end up having to do just a little bit of transferring just to try to utilize the most that we can and expand all of our budget in each one. So it's a little bit of change possibly in June to make those as close to zero as I can get them.
Is there any board discussion? Any public comment? Public comment? Any other board discussion or motion?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda. Well, second.
Mike made a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second, second motion. Is there any public comment? Comment? Board comment? Mike made the motion to accept the consent agenda. Second, second motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Um, in front of you guys, you have the canvas of election results, but it's a different one. Um, so Dan Dorsey from Dorsey Whitney Associates got me what they require for their bond versus the one I have in here. It's just kind of blank one from off the public instruction. And so this is the one that is reattached and needs to be approved as far as with canvassing the bond results. The same information is on here. It's just a little different format. So number, number of total registered electors was eight hundred eighty five. The canvas of votes is three hundred twenty three for the bond, yes, and a hundred ninety three voted no to the bond. Um, and then we'll have to just certify once you guys are done, Lisa, and I will sign it to send back to them. And then also attached is the activations for the three board members. And if we could probably make them in separate motions.
Reyna's texting now to be called.
Maybe. I was gonna say, yeah, because after the canvas, it definitely, we break and then we go on to the new business, so.
So I don't, I've not been in charge of doing this before.
You just moved to approve the canvas of election results. That's pretty good.
That's it. Is there any board discussion? Public comment? Public comment? Public comment? Is there a motion?
I'll second that.
Thiebe, you made the motion to approve the election results. Mike seconded the motion, is there any public comment?
I just want to say thank you to those of you that have taken on a task again for whatever your terms are, and the bonds and all that good stuff, so thank you.
Any other public comment?
It was, you know, the information was excellent, it was pitched really well. I'm glad to see improvements on this building, it's a big part of my life, and congratulations, you've done very professionally.
Thank you. Thiebe made the motion to approve election results, Mike seconded the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Then you're just going to move to approve the trustees, yeah.
It's looking only a couple people here.
Yes.
I, well, I guess we probably.
I don't think, I don't think you have to, because they were all by acclamation. Last year, we did them separate.
So you don't.
Because some were voted and some were acclamation. Was that, I think you can get them all ones. Unless you want to do separately.
But they can't.
Oh yeah, you're gonna be abstaining the whole time, so we have to probably do them separately, because there's all of you on this board still. Yep, go for it, I'll try to keep up.
I will move to approve the certificate trustee election by acclamation for Lisa Borkan.
Well, second. Stefan made the motion to approve the trustee election by acclamation for Lisa Borkan. Uh, Thiebe seconded the motion. Public comment? Public comment? Board comment? Stefan made the motion to approve the trustee election by acclamation for Lisa Borkan. Thiebe seconded the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, I abstain.
I need to approve the trustee election by acclamation for Rena Talk, I'll second that.
I was gonna say you could bunch those two together. Thiebe made the motion to approve the trustee election by acclamation for Rena Talk, Sam seconded the motion, is there any public comment? Public comment? Board comment? Thiebe made the motion to approve the trustee election by acclamation for Rena Talk, Sam seconded the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Any more?
I'll move to approve Stefan.
I'll second that. Mike made the motion to approve trustee election by acclamation for Stefan Livingston. Is there any, Sam seconded the motion, is there any public comment? Public comment? Board discussion? Mike made the motion to approve the trustee election by acclamation for Stefan Livingston, Sam seconded the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oops, sorry.
All those opposed, same sign.
I abstain.
We'll take a little break to sign oaths. Reorganization of the Board of Trustees. Do you want me to read this? Do you want to read this, or you want me to read it?
Read what?
It's you, you're calling for nominations. After new trustees have been sworn in, there should be a call of nominations and election of the chair and vice chair. This shall be followed by appointment of the district clerk. That's fun, before you're about.
I guess you don't rehire me, so I'll still be the business manager, someone could take minutes.
Meeting members are appointed by the board chair. This is a good time to review the trustee calendars as well. Is there nomination for board chair?
I would nominate Lisa.
I'll second that. Reveal me a second.
It's just majority of the vote.
Yeah, that's my guess.
Is there any other nominations? Mike made or nominated Lisa Borkan for board chair, Stefan seconded the motion, all those. Oh, just kidding. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Nomination, I don't know how to say that.
I nominate Stefan Livingston for vice chair.
Is there any other nominations for vice chair? Sam nominated Stefan for vice chair, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Do we have an appointment for clerk? It's volunteers.
I'd like to.
I second that.
Mike nominated Brittany, is there any other nominations? Mike nominated Brittany, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Congratulations, Brittany. Thanks for sitting down with you guys. Alright, so then we need to, committee, we're going to committees, so there's no interview personnel committee anymore, correct? I would like to know if any of my board members are passionate about any of these committees.
Yeah, me. I know, being on the policy. And one might be in on professional development or calendar.
Okay, I.
But you can.
I think policy is a good spot for Sam.
I agree.
I don't know who Stefan Borkan is.
Hold on.
Because.
What? Oh my gosh, this is hysterical, I'm so sorry.
I am, I'm not part of that family.
I'll have to tell Matt that you called Rena. That's not okay, before we do, I'm sorry.
That was a little.
I'm really sorry, that maybe happened while I was either real pregnant or really tired.
Hi Rena, we got to pass the canvassing and taking oaths, and we're, um. I was nominated as chair and Stefan is vice chair, so now I'm gonna, I'm figuring out what board members put on which committees. Sam has expressed that she would like to be on policy and professional development or calendar. Do you have a preference of something that you're passionate about, that you enjoy being on?
I didn't mind any of the ones that I was on, I guess, I don't care.
Okay, I have you on speaker, so I'll go around and ask the same to everybody else.
I would like to not be on IBB this year, please?
Okay, so policy.
Probably gonna be on it.
Do you two feel like you're.
What's that?
Policy.
I don't mind being on policy, especially during the winter months.
Leave that as it is? Because I feel like you two are good at that.
Oh yeah, change to the. That's probably the one where we're like, who's on that committee, so you just.
I wanted to change it from Lisa to Stefan, and then I went to change to her.
Um, okay. So transportation, are we leaving that one alone? It's always been Thiebe, and I just got added to it.
And it's only once a year.
Yeah.
That's what's happening.
Leave policy, professional development, so. Can we?
Now you guys are just talking about calendar and professional development possibly being the same people.
Mike, oh.
Should it be?
Could we?
That's up to you guys.
Can you move calendar and professional developments up there on the same committee and then just have it IBB at finance? Can we do that?
These are your committees.
So calendar with professional development. Just down there with IBB.
So.
That makes sense.
It does.
On development slash calendar committee.
What about finance, can you?
And finance can stay with IBB because also that is.
So let's put calendar with PD. And for calendar, let's do Mike. Who's gonna make it to those? She's, she'll be on one or the other.
I would, I would struggle to be on IBB because of the work schedule.
Okay. So let's put you on the PD, so Mike, Sam. And. Should we Dave there, what Dave? Is, oh no. Is that there?
So Mike, Sam, Dave.
IBB is gonna be really mad at me for stating this out loud, but I feel like Stefan has really ruined the budget in the last year. It's not for IBB, but for the finance part, like we actually need to have, we need to appreciate that about you. You can say no, I'm just telling you how, how I feel. We would just turn it to your contracts or probably have any IBB.
Just so you know, this IBB is. We don't do anything this year.
Oh, I know, because I was here.
Me too.
So IBB will do Stefan, Lisa. And Mike. Oh Rena, let's go Rena.
But right now, well, I guess.
Yeah, I guess you're on three of those, but the hard part is if you want, if you need to be on Finance or if you should be on the Facilities and Grounds.
So me?
Yes, you. Cause you're, I guess you're on three, but you're the Legislative Contact, Lisa and Stefan, then all the.
Yeah, that would be four. I don't need to be on the Facilities Committee.
But you're the one that knows what's going on, cause you've been, you've seen it since the beginning.
So how many, okay, of what we fixed, Mike's on one. Sam's on two, Dave's on one.
We could just switch on, Mike could go on to Facilities and Stefan.
Okay, let's do that, Mike, not Stefan, leave Rena and Dave.
Agreed, Ben.
Facility, Grounds, Safety, Food and Service.
Okay.
And. So. Rena and Sam, are you good with staying on daycare? Okay, I think we'll leave daycare probably. It's not okay?
No, it's okay.
Okay. Is that?
I'd like your three even.
I think Dave's just got one. He's got two.
Dave's, Dave's got two and Thebe has one, that's where you're off.
Do you want daycare, Thebe?
No. Do not care.
Yeah, on the wrong board.
My mind's off.
That's alright.
She needs to replace Rena in one of them, Rena has three.
Okay.
But not daycare.
So which other ones is true?
Rena's has Facility Grounds and then IBB.
Do you want to do Facility Grounds?
Yes.
Okay. Rena, Thebe's gonna take your Facility Grounds, cause you were on too many. So your IBB. Daycare.
Okay.
And that's it.
Can we just get through all?
So, uh, Facility Grounds is Mike, Thebe, IBB. Oh, sorry, Transportation, Thebe, Lisa.
Facility Grounds, Mike, Thebe and Dave.
Mike, Thebe, Dave. IBB, Stefan, Lisa, Rena. Legislative, Lisa, Stefan. And before I finish this, is it like whoever is number one runs it, so we should flip that up, so everybody runs something? Professional Development, Sam, Mike, Dave. Policy. Sam and Stefan, daycare, Lisa, Sam, Rena.
Do you want me to just rotate them when I do it to make sure everyone has one? Isn't the one spot somewhere else out here?
I think just how I read them this last time.
Who did you read for PD first?
Uh, Sam.
Okay, who did you read for policy first, Sam?
Oh. Let's do Stefan first on that one. And then Mike's first on Facility, Thebe's first on Transportation.
Yep.
Stefan, IBB.
He's on two. You want Rena first on IBB?
Yes.
Or Rena first on daycare?
Rena first on daycare.
And then do you want to go first on IBB then?
Stefan is.
Stefan's already on the policy.
Okay, yes.
Got it.
Is there anything?
Um, the school board calendar, I only have the one moved to May for the daycare handbook to where we're not gonna be open in June. Carrie would like it in May like we did this year, so that she can be approved before she goes out for the summer.
That sounds.
That's an immediate change that I know unless you guys have something else.
And that's that's something that needs, you don't have to vote on it.
No, but just a little bit if you guys are in.
Lisa, daycare, Brittany and all.
She said on, as far as the school board calendar, the only change to make would be to, Carrie would like the daycare handbook moved to May. So that if there isn't summertime daycare, then she's done by the time school's out.
Okay.
One question about like work sessions or like the committees we just created, when they should get together, is it possible to like set a month for each of those to make sure they're meeting? Like the normal time, say like the calendar committee, couldn't that be on our calendar first or? Or like handbooks, if we're gonna look at one and potentially approve it in February, we should be having a work session in January to prep for the February meeting. So we stay kind of ahead of that and give ourselves time, so things are tabled, they're not tabled out in the summer, or then we're crunch time and having all these extra meetings. And then people can have time to review it, I guess.
If you want to add to the September one, then it's gonna be added in outline.
September will be what, Mr. Captain?
Will be added outlying place on a rotating basis. Based on our discussion, having that one hosted at one of our country schools or.
Oh, the meeting, I see what you're saying.
Are we wanting to?
Why do you want to take the meeting somewhere else when most people live here in town?
Just as a, you know, if we do that once a year, then we actually have to go and have a conversation about a bond, a levy, those kind of things that we're not. Just knocking on the door when we want to vote for something, like they get a chance to.
But they can watch us on video, and where do you need anybody come to a meeting?
Well, I can't guarantee that. But I could, I could say there'd be drive time and it'd be fun.
I mean, I drove to Hammond at five, four thirty in the morning to go talk to about the bond.
Is there something you want to set up as far as the Policy Committee to kind of? I think have the board reviewing.
Same policy might be hard this year only because you guys are gonna have a lot of policy coming, I would think in the next couple of months with legislative changes.
Yeah.
Legislative years are all of those updates.
I was thinking like handbooks, like if we just have it planned, you know what I mean, and in the minutes and.
To have a work session.
Post the work session and.
Yeah. You want, or you want to set a policy one, how do you think, or where are you?
I was meaning more like handbooks.
So if I do.
Cause if those are set, what month we're looking at them?
So activities would be in March, classified, certified, so gonna do, yep, I'm gonna take off that student handbook part, I'm sorry, I didn't realize that was on there still. So student activity will go together, so.
Okay.
Classified, certified would be in February.
Okay.
Activity would be in March and then daycare, transportation would be in April, which is kind of where we do it for the daycare this year.
Just to plan out the post for the work sessions.
Are there any other committees you think right now besides, I mean, calendar, we tried to do the calendar in April, so I guess.
So approve calendar for next year in April, so we would have a plan in March.
I would, I would actually say the calendar meeting probably needs to be in February. Just because based on all things that, if you do any sort of survey, give you a chance to get put out, it'd just give you a better chance to have a better conversation about it.
Are there any other ones that we need to set, we need to for these things? County Transportation's always in July. And that's set by Tracy.
Do we have, I mean, we should walk, I think all trustees are supposed to walk around the school and see the conditions of the school, or just do like a walk through. What did we do, I tried to do that last year and then I think it was like bad weather, not everybody could come or something.
I think, did we do a couple of different ones?
We did different ones when, cause it wasn't during like a meeting and so we could all be together. I don't know if we had like a goal date in order to do that by each year.
So you could post it like a work session though, and do like a five thirty, whoever could come, or you have your Facilities Grounds group do it if you wanted them to be.
Yeah, that's true.
Those three to just do.
I think our policy does say that each board member is supposed to do it once a year, right?
It says supposed to, I don't remember the wording, I'll look it up.
There's something that I don't know how to.
Cause then if you come outside, outside of that, you're supposed to get approval on it.
By the chair. Or maybe the whole board.
I was just reading the message, for some reason I accidentally discussed it looking for something else. No, I do not, absolutely not, or I'd be.
See, I know somebody else probably did. We can come back to that if you find something.
Yep. Hey. It's like we're starting over again, recognition and reports.
Some of your thoughts are to talk about, so I will, I'm gonna just right now apologize to Marty because that is, this is the beginning of the meeting. So this is.
My daughter's home from that call.
And I, she's like, all covered up, and then I was like, oh god.
We couldn't.
Yeah, we could've moved it up.
So yeah, we'll be right out of the gate, word is words.
Coffee on me. You're up, so I'll let you talk, I'll just tell you, all of you, she, Carol, we got a chance to talk about this, but you do have pictures in front of you, so. Just some random assortment of pictures of, of the trip last week on Sunday, Monday. We headed across the state to Matiti, Wyoming.
Well, actually, before I speak on the Matiti trip, I thought I would share a quick update from the Early Childhood Education Project Based Learning that I actually got to go to in Missoula at the University of Montana in April. And the keynote speaker spoke about how young children learn best through guided play, and she reminded us how playful learning helps develop thinking skills, communication, social, emotional growth. And as we all know, a lot of the best learning doesn't come from worksheets, it actually comes from the hands-on experiences. So through the workshops I attended on project-based learning, we worked on how to design meaningful projects that meet learning goals while keeping kids curious and engaged. I also saw great ways to tie reading and writing into projects, so literacy will still stay strong. We got to tour two Missoula schools where PBL is the model of instruction and the classrooms are designed around play, inquiry and collaboration. And it was really inspiring to watch the kids engaged in their learning. So then last week, we were able to go to visit teachers in Matiti, Wyoming, first we made a stop off in Powell at their high school and, oh my word. You need to take a tour through that high school, it was amazing, that our teacher there is above and beyond. But when we went to Matiti, it was kind of interesting, cause it was their day where they were very first going toward the PBL model. So they wanted to start at the last three weeks of school before the next fall school year started to give everybody a taste mark, to try to figure out kinks, you know, what was going down. There was, some teachers were a little stressed, that were a little, you know, it was very interesting to watch. So the elementary's plan is very different from their K through twelve plan, and I got to visit one-on-one with each of the teachers from pre-K up through fifth grade. And they do continue to plan to teach their core subjects in the morning, the reading and the math and, you know, those really phonics, those things that you have to have. And then they plan to focus on projects in the afternoon, which is something that actually our own primary grades are already doing, particularly our kindergarten class. So next year, for myself, I plan to have a year-long theme with one larger project each quarter, to maybe share with the community and with parents. Because the goal of project-based learning is to find something in your community that you can help with, or that you can help others with. And so I'm, I'm excited to bring these ideas back and continue growing our approach. So thank you very much for this professional development opportunities that I've had the last couple of months.
Thank you, Marty.
So I did not type my speech. But I would just say that this, I had the opportunity to work in a charter school that was very project-based and it was, it's, it made me think back on all the cool things that we could possibly do. And I mean, there was many conversations on the car right back about ideas and, I mean, to simplify it for you guys, this can be across the border in high school. So let's say, I was just talking to Brittany about this, it could mean something as simple as the history teacher is teaching geography, right? And each place she teaches geography, Mrs. Walker, could be having them do foods from those countries. And then they could bring in, let's say, the senior citizens to test taste those meals and the kids could teach them about the country and they could taste the food. So I mean, these are kind of ideas what project-based could look like. So you bring in a community members, you're tying classes together, and then their grading is a little, I thought it was very, very cool. It's just something that we'll have to look next year and kind of base our ideas around and. I think really the takeaway is, is that we have some teachers that could work together and do some really cool things, it's just designing how that looks like in our schedule and making sure that we actually take the time. And Mr. Captain's. Got some ideas on how we can have some time to actually work together to make this work, so I'm, I'm pretty excited. So I think we have to start small and kind of build out, but this could be an awesome opportunity to make our school kind of stand out, so.
Thank you, Karen.
I'll just throw in there, just so everybody, you remember, to start with, we have a grant, we got a grant out of the Ellen Foundation from Miles City that we, I built this plan on zero dollars and then we got a grant to kind of help with expenses as far as travel and hotels and those kind of things. And so we have, in September, this week I will lock down with, with the superintendent in Matiti. In September, we'll take another group over there and in December, we'll take another group. And in April, they will bring a group to us. My only main request with their group coming to us is that they bring students with us and so bring a few students with them. And so hopefully, we look at that for ourselves as we get closer to that. But just some pretty interesting possibilities to take school and not make it about a class or grade, if you will, and more about, you know, what, what students need to learn and the skills they need to have, as well as, you know, how reading, math, those important subjects fit in there. And there is, it didn't work out because of just the time of the season, but the next trip. The, all the trips, we will work to take board members with us to meet with their board as well, see it and talk to it and hear the good and the bad and the ugly about it, just so the more we know, the more. I was very, very, very appreciative of the, the four teachers that went. Thank God for hearing aids, cause I can turn down sometimes, but they, on the way back, their conversation about ideas and, I mean, there's a document being generated with all sorts of things, possibilities as far as how those projects can work, but, but in the end, it all comes down to time and giving teachers time to work together to, to do it. You can't, you can't, can't build those things from seven till midnight every night, because that's not, that's not a fair expectation, so the one point, the reason. point, the reason we stopped in Powell, though, I will say, it is something to see. But the teacher is the teacher that I feel more comfortable modeling for students than for other teachers than a lot of other teachers in the sense, because he is, he's a person that protects his personal time in a way like no other teacher I've worked with. Comes to work at 7:30, he leaves at 4:00. Don't ask him to say later than that. But from 7:30 to 4:00, it's game on. And as they said, when you see the projects that he gets his kids to do and really run with, it says a lot about what we can do and get kids excited and kind of let them run, so.
Thank you very much. Bye, Marty.
Bye, Marty. Thank you.
Um, trustee report. We're wondering if we could do our June meeting June 2nd, starting with the work session with Mr. Caffey at 5:30, right?
Yep.
So I have.
Please, what meeting is that?
Our June meeting. There's different people gonna be gone at different times, so we're looking at having it on June 2nd.
Okay.
At 5:30, starting with the work session with Mr. Caffey's contract.
Okay.
Does that work for you?
Yes.
No, I will not be, I'm not available that week. So, but you can proceed without me, June's.
June's crazy.
June is June? Does it work for everybody else?
Yeah, I just put it in my calendar.
So it's done, deal.
Yeah.
June 2nd, 5:30. Superintendent report. Oh. State and federal issues. Superintendent report.
Uh, okay. So last week, we had staff appreciation week and hopefully we got a chance to see pictures and whatnot online and need to thank you for coming and helping serve, make rooter votes and whatnot, but an amazing amount of work, but amazing amount of community support for our staff, our staff across the region as far as out, the office staff did a lot of work to get donations and whatnot and we had lots of different prizes and things to say thank you from businesses, from Rapid City to Billings, to Spearfish, to Baker, to Eclaca, all across the board. And so just a really nice from coffee on Monday morning till coffee on Wednesday morning. I think they had coffee every day and a mix of sugar. They were very, very hype for last week and then a lot of fun things for them and well-deserved for our entire staff. The legislative update, they, you know, the STARS Act passed and so was signed into law on Friday. So we had 15, we have till the 15th to have our official sign-off in to the, to OPI for the state to make sure we get that funding. So that was taken care of today, actually. We did get, they did pass the 3% maintenance inflationary adjustment. So that, that puts us in kind of, does not catch us up from the past five or six years, but it does at least give us something so that they can focus on what they need to during the decennial study. During, in the last month, the week of Easter, or the week after Easter, I guess it was, I attended the bar conference, which is building assets and working on relationships. And so we just a really cool way to look at how they work with students. And so been looking at what that might look like, been torturing the admin meeting every, every week since we got back about how you, how you, kids don't know how to communicate with each other until we teach them how to communicate. And if kids can communicate with each other, the research is pretty astounding that the rest of it all goes with it. So when kids, kids have that positive atmosphere at school and they can communicate with adults and communicate with each other, then everything else seems to, not seems to, everything else goes with it. And so in particular, reading and math's work go with it. So it's a pretty powerful thing. And so looking at where and how that can fit into what our school does. Talked about the Matiti visit and what that is, coming up with that. Talk a little bit about fundraising kind of updates. So the best part about fundraising, best part about ideas is when you have ideas, it gets people thinking and it gets people asking questions. And so that puts us in a good spot. We have some parents that are looking at some other fundraising, some of the fundraising opportunities we talked about last week, last month. But then out of that has came other fundraising opportunities as far as looking at using roundups on point-of-sale transactions. Most of you probably experienced that at some restaurant, gas station, and so how that works. And so we are exploring like what, what software, how that works, because that is another opportunity that again, gives us potentially a way to try to fundraise without going through any of our community, I mean, any of our accounting members, I mean, really trying to leverage people that are traveling through, whether it's for summer visits or the Dino Shing Dig or any of those kind of things. So working, working at those pieces and kind of trying to line out all that fun stuff. We're still, I will, we were told by the 15th, and so it's the 12th, I was hopeful that we know before tonight, but by the 15th, they're supposed to, but they're out of the government, so they can play by their own rules. We're supposed to know whether we received the Montana Reading Grant. So at that point, I will send you lots of detailed information. We do essentially, here's the, here's the good news moving forward, and we'll have a couple of recommendations with that, but potentially, we are fully staffed going into before the school year is out. And so truly gives us a chance to lock down schedules, look at what that will, how all these pieces fit together and not be trying to figure out during July, June, August. So that's an exciting piece as far as academically speaking. Oh.
I know, you did it after I first came in.
Oh, so at some point, it's, there's never a right time on here, but we, I will be working to get us locked down for a board retreat, meaning an evening or whatnot, so we can truly, I mean, we'll work to take maybe some of the information that we're going to discuss later and lay out a plan for where we go in the next year, in the next 12 months. And so we can all kind of get on that same page.
We can shoot my board. I think we can shoot my board.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Mark Awards Wednesday. I would sure love for you guys to come if you haven't. It's kind of a fun time. It starts at 8:10. We, I'm assuming we'll have a little more awards than normal, but it'll be kind of a celebration to kick off on the end of the school year. Maps testing, we're very close to being done. Remember, that's our benchmark testing, just to kind of see where we're at throughout the school year and watch them, you know, be able to kind of pinpoint who's above, below and on academic level. Mass testing, we have one test left and I will be taking the seventh and eighth graders and we will be finishing that bad boy out when we're done. So remember, mass testing is our new state testing. And like Mr. Caffey already said, schedules, we're gonna get started on here soon. And then the science assessment, just so you guys know, we have to still do a regular science assessment at the end of the year and that's for fifth, eighth and juniors, but the juniors is for the ACT. So we actually got our ACT scores back and I am very, very, very impressed with some of the scores we got back. We're, we're, our average is a lot higher than it's been this year, so I thought that was a really exciting piece to be able to share. Any questions before we roll into athletic? My counterpart is home getting ready for, she has to cook for the senior banquet tomorrow, so she went home and I told her I could cover. But Mr. Bronson, Rogers, excuse me, Bronson, is gonna pull up our district's, our divisionals qualifying. We're, I want you guys to know, we kicked some serious tail last week. Boys only lost by two points to be first and girls did win first by a lot. Amelia Bruce won every race she was in. So really, I mean, we, we kind of kicked some serious tail, so just gonna let you guys kind of look at that. I mean, we, we were going into divisionals very well set, so.
Yeah, what do we have? Two, two of us win all five events up there?
Oh, yeah.
Xander and Amelia.
Xander won. Oh, yeah, I forgot, Xander won.
And Amelia.
Amelia.
They got one all five that they took to districts.
Yeah, no, it was, it was, it was really impressive.
Well represented.
Yes. We kind of kicked butt all day. It was very impressive. Uh, Mr. Rogers, could you help me out and go back, because I can't remember what I was saying, whatever. Oh, did you email him over the sports?
Yes, it's a simple lot of people.
Um, so, um, sorry, I just forgot your name. I'm gonna put them on the spot today. State track, so divisionals is Thursday. We're gonna do a spirit walk on Wednesday down the hallway and get the kids out the door and put them on the bus. They have practice at 6:00 to 8:00 in Laurel on Wednesday night and then divisionals on Thursday. State track is in Missoula this year, May 22nd and 23rd. I believe the plan is to have them practice Tuesday. Stay in Billings, then drive to Missoula on Wedn-, no, come on, Wednesday, Billings. Thursday is, we get to Missoula because you have practice time and then Friday, Saturday is the, let me try third, 24, son.
We definitely get the picture.
You get the idea. You get, you get the, the break. Yes. Um, Mr. Rogers in just a second is gonna pull up. Um, next year's sports schedule is pretty well ready to go. So remember, this is always tentative, okay? Always tentative. So refs have been contacted. Will and East is back up and running. We have seven, seven teams that have told me yes. I'm still kind of doing some searching for others. It's really, really hard. So from what I'm understanding, the state of North Dakota and the state of South Dakota and Wyoming kind of been making their schedules for their teams, so it's hard to try to get. So it's already done for them. They're already in their max capacity. So I'm having trouble reeling in a few others, but I'm really happy to have seven back for the Will and East. So, um, football's ready. Homecoming will be that 10th. We have that on the calendar, just so you guys know. Basketball's in there too. We won't worry about it right now. I mean, it's done as well, so. Any questions?
So you got homecoming and senior night the same night?
Sure looks that way. It's just how it worked out. Yes, it'll have to, it'll just, actually, it might be nice. We might get it all done in one horns down. One, just one big celebration.
That's we go.
Yep, against webo, webo, webo. So, any questions?
I did attach that, so you guys, it's clickable if you go to the website now.
And I'll have Mr. Rogers put it up on the website, just so kind of people have an idea of what that is going into next year. Really, just so you guys understand this, and then I'll stop talking. But, so the state of Montana technically sets our schedule for us now, okay? So they kind of give us the week we have to do it. So these dates are where these come from. We're, we're operating off of what the state of Montana gives us and then we fill in the gaps where we can. So no, when everybody asks, you know, well, why is this like this? The state of Montana is kind of setting it for us. We just fill in like our, our Baker games, our non-conference games. So if anybody asks, that is, that is why. So. Is there anything else? Did I, Mr. Rogers? Sorry.
Thank you, Carol.
Yeah.
Maintenance.
I'll take maintenance, but I just want to throw a couple of things back there. So that Will and East, we part of getting teams here is making sure they don't want to go anywhere else. So I will be working with the chamber, but we'll be working as hard as we can to make it as, as amazing of a volleyball tournament as it should be, but so that those teams don't A, want to not be there and B, talk about it and continue to spread the word, because.
I actually already have a team that's booked in the Midway Motel.
There you go. I mean, it is a, it is a competitive draw for those and it sounds like a great class project to see what the economic impact of having a volleyball tournament in your town all day, staying it overnight, all those things could be. So it, it does fall on us to really think about all the ways we can make sure from food to, you know, how we take care of it and how we support that is a big deal. I do want to throw back out there and I apologize for not having it in mind, the information will go out to, to teachers. We kind of worked through some of the teachers, we were made aware of it last week, kind of brainstorming through emergency protocols. And so we will be sending out information tomorrow to all the parents that we will be doing an active shooter drill on Wednesday at the end of the day. And so we just want to make sure everybody is absolutely aware of it. We do want no questions about it being a drill. And so they will actually end the day with that. We coordinated that with the sheriff's department. And the hardest part about any of those kind of things is drill and there is no, there is no outlining it on what you need to do, because if it ever truly happens, people are gonna have to react and they, give them a chance to think through that. So we will start those announcements tomorrow in school as well, just to make sure, especially our littlest of littles, but especially our kids know that, hey, we're gonna practice this, but it is absolutely a drill. So just want to make sure you guys are aware of that, so you don't get a random call or something about something happening. Maintenance, Arnold is out through most of, through, he's been out for a month and he'll be out through the middle of June. He is recovering well. Yeah, he's getting healthy. Had a little process done to get him healthy, serious thing, but I've been checking on him and he seems like he's Arnold, he's doing, he's improving every day. And so that's, that's, that's where we are with him. We're, we're looking at some options to bring in some professional lawn mowing services that can assist while he is out, but.
Collecting clippings?
Different conversation there. So anyway, that's maintenance.
Bronson, transportation.
I was actually out a good share of April, because I now have three kids. But April is usually the tough month with track because you have all these things scheduled and then the day of or the day before, it's like, oh, never mind, we're not gonna go. Or, oh, no, how about in two days instead? So, I don't know, they handled it very well. Everybody got, I think, where they needed to go, when they needed to get there. So that worked out pretty good. And we're just ramping down to the end. And then we're figuring out things for what next year's gonna look like yet and a few conversations yet to have. Technology, it's the end of the year and there's a lot of things going on at the end of the year. Just re, getting ready to recollect Chromebooks, getting plans ready in October. Microsoft is no longer supporting Windows 10, so that means this summer I need to move everybody to Windows 11. And I've got a few things that I'm trying to figure out the best way to do that. I've heard of some other schools that are doing a I've heard of some other schools that are doing a serverless project where they've gotten rid of their active directory. And that's the backend server that manages all your credentials. And so it's like the login that you use to log into the computer. It also handles a bunch of other things that I haven't quite sorted out how they handle that. But I'm hoping to visit Glenn Dive in a bit to see how that works, cause we got rid of a bunch of his servers, and so he didn't have that hardware cost anymore. And then does authentication through Google, which is what we use with Chromebooks. So, hopefully this summer I can figure that, all that out before the next year starts. Then there's other summer projects that I do that are things that will disrupt the internet for everybody, that I can't really do during the school year, cause sometimes I make a mistake and then internet's off a little bit longer than it needs, needs to be. I think I've got a couple other things written up there, but it's kind of what I got, unless you have any questions.
Thanks, Branson. Custodial?
Uh, they're busy getting ready for the end of the year with graduation, um, and getting all the, um, stuff ready for, who knows, maybe the last official stripping and cleaning of our tile floor based on all of those kind of things, so, um, that's, that is headed that way, so.
Um, I said the end of the fiscal year is a honest reminder that Drake and I both worked in the summer. Um, typically it's only about three days, three to four days each, and so we'll kinda have some different schedules. And then Misty, oh, God, did permission sense, Misty works a week after and a week before typically, and so she will be in for a little bit with us to do interview reporting with our student information system, and then usually right around a week or so, um, to do the back-to-school packets. And she sometimes does them a little earlier than that week, so that she's not in the week of affairs, cause it gets crazy and wild and lots of interruptions. Um, I do have two things that showed up after this went out, so, or one thing for sure, so budget for the bond timeline. Tyler Bush got ahold of us and maybe we'll have something to approve for them in June, as far as for McKinstry for the finish of design build, so they can start cleaning out bids come this fall, and so he will have that for me, um, before the June meeting, and then also something from Bridget Exstrom. So DA Davidson is our bond issuing company, and so we have some stuff to do with them also at the June meeting. And then, um, budget amendments, um, Mr. Cafferty may be bringing in a budget amendment to the board or a transfer of funds, and so just to kinda give you guys a perspective, um, we have vet night money in the county because of the vet night planet colony. And the revenue is far stretched from ten thousand to sixty thousand, and it depends on the year and everything in between. And so, it has been advised to never put that into your general fund, so there are schools that have consistent revenue from other sources in their counties, and it goes in against their mills. The reason that I've, we've, how to put it in, and what Laura's told me is that you'd never do that, because if you budget for the sixteen, you get the ten, you just shorted yourself the fifty, cause there's nothing to make that up in between. And that happened two or one year, and so I do have a little excess of what we consider cash sitting in there, and so, um, you wanna keep enough cash in there to where you can fund your next year, so July through October, you're funding on cash, because you don't have any budget until taxes are paid, I mean, for the most part. We do feel there's maybe a little bit of cash sitting there, we're just trying to figure out the best place to put it, um, before the end of the year. And we are in the process of writing a safety grant, and so we're trying to figure out if that could be the percentage match for the safety grants, or if it goes into the interlocal agreement, or, so we'll have a, just kinda give you guys a preface, I guess, of what you'll see in June, there will be something to do with the budget and moving up money at that point, so that's what that is. Other than that, I don't think I have anything, I will be gone in June, that's why we're moving the meeting, I have my yearly meeting in Great Falls this year, that's like the end of June.
So one caveat to add to that, if, if we go with Jump Start, that is funded in, or it's funded after the fact, and so, um, having cash on hand allows us to pay that, and then we'll reimburse at the end of next year based on numbers of students in it, all of that, so. So, you've gotta have the money upfront to fund it before you can get back from the state.
Thank you.
Do you have anything from the IRS?
I actually just got something in the mail today. Just more paperwork. They said, from what I can gather, I need to call the ladies, though, our really, really big one is the one I got the letter back on, and she's, it sounds like if they move it to the right quarter, then the quarter before that is short. But I know we made all those payments, so now I have to go and look at that quarter, so. And I already made all the payments for it, so there's no payments to be made, I was just hoping for the refund, so I got some research to do now. So that's the first thing I've gotten back that didn't say, please allow sixty more days for your inquiry, so.
Lisa, can I add one more thing to that? As a counselor's report, and just whatever you thought.
Oh, I just wanna make sure everybody remembers that graduation's Saturday, and it's two o'clock, and Lisa, you are good to give out diplomas? Is that a factual statement to say?
Okay.
Okay. Okay, we're good with that?
Well, I would echo on there too, just so make sure there's, nobody missed that, that, um, Ms. Squire is, um, speaking as well as the governor is coming to address our, our students on that, so I, I would, I would, it would be great to see our, our pair of board.
We just wanted to make sure we were sound or ducks and all that.
Okay, I'll visit with you.
Okay.
My hand is off.
He did it under pressure.
Two years.
Take care.
Rollin' right along, um, banking at the end of the year, numbers have been up and, uh, things have been. Very good.
Uh, extended contract consideration for Carol?
Uh, so, based on kind of past practice with, with Carol, um, locking down all transcripts and getting ready for the next upcoming year, we'll usually have her for ten days, and so, uh, it can be a mix, because it can be a fair number after school. It can be five after school and five before school starts to kind of come in and meet with students.
And move to offer an extended contract for Carol Spencer for a maximum of ten duty days?
I'll second.
Sam made the motion to, uh, make the offer to extend contract for Carol Spencer for a maximum of ten duty days. Mike seconded the motion, is there any public comment? Public comment? Board discussion?
She's not in here, but I think we all need to tell her congratulations on actually graduating with her counseling degree.
Yep, congratulations for graduating.
They denied your extended contract.
Who said that?
Amy. Thank you. I announced her.
He said Sam made the motion to extend Carol Spencer's contract for a maximum of ten days. Mike seconded the motion, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Activity funds, banking.
So, based on, um, a lot of things that have been going on, where our money currently is housed, where other monies are currently housed, we would like to look at changing our banking partner, um, and, and moving it out of where it currently is, and, and looking at other options.
So Rogers, look at other options.
The activity account still sits with Summit, and the funds sit with the treasurer.
Everything else is with the treasurer.
Yep.
So the thought was to move everything so it's in one.
It's in one place.
Yep, one place for everything.
I'll make the motion to approve the transfer of activity funds to the treasurer's.
I'll second that motion. Mike made the motion to approve the transfer of activity funds to the Carter County Treasurer's office as presented, we second the motion, is there any public comment?
I just have a question, like, how does that work, like, when you need, like, we have a game, or concessions, or whatever, you gotta go get a full envelope or whatever, and if it's not, or it's like, how do you go get money that comes in charge?
They have cash on hand for us.
Yeah, okay, I was just like, I.
I asked her that too, cause I didn't think she ever had cash, I mean, like, any deposit, but, yeah, she does.
You're great to go make the bank, I'm like.
Yep, she does have cash on hand.
Any other public comment? Board comment? Mike made the mo- motion to approve the transfer of activity funds to Carter County Treasurer's office as presented, we second the motion, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Job descriptions.
Stefan, you ready to go? We have lots of pages here, and so, um, in, in the process of looking at all of our, going through IDB and looking at all the different pieces, we essentially have, we, we had zero job descriptions for positions that were paid. And so, looking through all that, um, you, you really can't have a position that's paid that's gonna be evaluated without it having some sort of actually knowing what's expected, nor is that really fair for anybody applying for one of those positions, or taking one of those positions, if you will. And so, we have, um, two of those positions were on there, athletic and activity director and head coaching, and then the list below that is the ones that we have developed and built those job descriptions for. Some simple changes, you can look through those, but just some simple changes on the, uh, on the athletic director and coaches on that athletic director one, looking, um, to supervise, just change the wording there, supervise athletic activities, and to meet the, the district, um, financial and activity needs of the entire student body. Added the step in there as far as, well, you know, we, one of the responsibilities is help lead fundraising and money management strategies for the activities, athletic department. And then, if you jumped over there to page two, um, develop long-range purchasing plans for uniforms and equipment, and currently we have kind of a, we, we've had enough changeover in those positions that we don't really have a clear plan on, uh, you know, when, when is basketball up, when is football up, when is track up, and those kind of things, and so, working to, um, develop those, and then, that, that's the only changes on that one.
Could we, like, comment on each one as you go through?
I'd agree.
Okay, so on the athletic and activity director, number five says may assist with selecting and assigning. Is that just good wording, or will assist, or?
Yeah, that's, don't, that's the way it was worded, so it didn't, didn't, don't have a problem with that, I mean, I would think will would be a better option, if you have one in place, for sure.
Okay. And then on page two, number twenty-five, should that, why is it limited to just high school?
So there really isn't any, and part of AMHSA, there is no meetings for junior high.
Oh, you're doing this, okay.
Maybe, do you want to say like state, means it ends state?
Well, it could be district, it could be.
Yeah.
Well, that's what, I didn't know if it meant like parent meetings, or other meetings, or?
Those are all like, like the sidebar conversation, like, okay, we're gonna do that, or football, and then we'll play the junior high over here, but it's not a, it's a high school.
So can it just be attending athletic meetings?
Sounds good to me.
Anybody else have anything on that one? What do you mean on number nine, on the athletic track, or the head coach? Excuse me, um, leading community service projects, like, what's it in mind with that one?
On which page are you on?
On the next one.
Head coach, sorry.
Okay, sorry.
Um.
Keep going.
There you go.
Number nine.
Oh, so, one, one of your, your big pieces of, of, you're gonna build the program and you're gonna evaluate your coaches, then, how they, how they build that, you know, to give back to the community, and they, those do not have to be, let's be clear on it, and if, are they trying to do something, it could be as.
Junior high picks up trash.
It could be pick-up trash, it could be go down and serve lunch at the senior center, it could be, but are we, you know, it needs to be an expectation, otherwise it gets lost in the shuffle, and then nobody, like, oh, I'm not gonna do that, if it's there, then, do I think it's important? Yeah, I do think it's important, so.
I have a question.
Okay.
Just coaches overall and athletic director, when we had discussed the student and activity book, you know, being combined, um, is there anything that you think would be beneficial to be put in these position descriptions, like, they must, you know, like, some people had commented they didn't know, or like dress code came up, like, who's going to enforce that? Does that need to be somewhere, um, who's gonna be responsible for that, or just anything in that student activity book, who's gonna be enforcing those rules? Like, if you're not present, do they know, or?
That's on.
Or, I didn't know if you wanted it specifically in here, Mr. Cafferty, or where that piece would fit in?
I don't think that's a, I mean, I don't think that's a bad thing, I, um, so what would we, what would we want that to just be? So, Chris?
Are responsible for enforcing the student.
The student.
The regulations.
Yeah.
Students slash activity. If that is part of the.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think that's safe to have.
And that's for both athletic director and coach description, or?
I guess.
I would put in both personally, cause there's times, like, at district tournament, the coach is busy, but the AD's in the stands, they see something, they, you know.
Or maybe those could be organized, they are to ensure their coaches are abiding by, or enforcing the regulations to the students. I'm not arguing with it, but something, those should be a little bit different, because it's, if they're evaluating, you know, your head coaches and stuff, it's their role to make sure that their coaches aren't forcing the regulations that are in handbook, cause they're gonna be the ones on the players, athletes.
Megan?
Yeah, kinda like that, because they, they now have kids excused for rantings, but they're not all day coming to practice. Do the coaches still get a report from the office that their student isn't there, but they're coming to practice, that they've been out and ranting all day? But they thought it was half-day.
So, yes and no. Depends on if they meant, if they did their, if they got their pink sheet and did all of those pieces.
So is that clear, Brittany, on what you're adding?
Yep, I think it's okay.
Are you gonna move on music?
Yeah, I, so these ones are, these are new, and so we have zero on these. So I, please, don't make me read the entire job description, but.
I hope everybody's got.
Yeah, basically, we have those broke up into, you know, seven, twelve. And obviously, there's a similarity with that. There's a little bit of an expectation, trying to lay out what they will do, what the expectation for that is, and then what they will also as far as, so they know whether they're supposed to be playing every week, every day, and those kind of things. But in essence, just getting them to get it started and go through that and then it jumps right into the other one with, you know, choir for seven, twelve goes hand in hand with that.
Anybody have any comments for music?
I do want to add one. You have that they have to do a marching band. I was doing a marching band. Is that still a requirement?
What page are you on about that being, or like what number are you on there so I can follow?
It's under number three, the last bullet, coordinate managed marching band activities.
Yep, thank you.
There are times you don't have enough kids, and I do marching band in high school and. Yeah. I mean, they usually go out and play in the stands, like do a neat band thing, but marching band.
Pet band instead of marching band?
Different, coordinate.
I mean.
Oh, no.
Okay. Seven, twelve band, preferred qualifications.
I think that would be, I mean, I think that would be a good point, that just change that from marching to pet band.
Just pet band.
Or, or you could even get away with pet, just put the.
I was gonna say, just manage band activities and you're covered under everything.
That's how I read it. I skipped over the marching part when I read it.
I did too. I didn't catch it.
We did marching bands and we had to.
I was like, where's marching band? I read it like three times, like.
Courtney, Mary.
Oh, it's right there.
Yeah.
I'm here.
Oh.
So are we taking marching out completely?
So you guys are up top, I'm down by preferred qualifications.
Well, like you said, this was my first one.
Sorry. She's also down here.
She's, yeah, she was at the bottom.
I'm sorry. And then there's also gonna be one on the front that I think it's taken out under three, the first bullets, plan, organize, and direct to performances, concerts, and marching band. That, that needs to say pet band activities.
Or you can say just bad.
And.
Bullet.
Timities, band activities, and then are you qualifications, pet band and not marching?
Yes. Scribbled that up.
Okay. Anything else?
I have, I have something on the head coach under evaluation. So it talks about performance of this job will be evaluated annually in accordance with provisions of the board's policy on evaluation of administrative personnel. Is that something we need to develop? Or I don't know that we have anything outside of like our.
I would honestly just say.
Mr. T.
Yeah. I don't think you need that specific.
In the evaluation, would that be done, it sounds like by the athletic director? For your coaches, or maybe in conjunction with you and the athletic director?
I, yes, but I think you could actually end the sentence at annually.
At a what?
At annually.
At annually.
Annual, oh.
Performance of this job will be evaluated annually.
At least annually, that's how you have the other ones. Did you want at least in there? Just in case it needs to be more than one conversation?
Well.
You know, maybe it's not a formal evaluation, but then you have that flexibility if you needed to have an additional conversation. Because I think the other ones, if I were to, I would just.
I'm gonna cross that same line down on the activities one.
Um, yeah, performance of this job will be evaluated at least annually.
Yeah.
And the same thing with athletic.
I see anything on the athletic, on the activity director one, yep. It's got that long, crazy line.
Anything else? There through music?
Uh, I would make a change just in music. I would change the qualifications.
Or?
Um, that first one, I would just move that first one to preferred.
On music?
Yeah, so the first one, qualifications, move it to preferred, which would be preferred, but. Yeah, we, we may or may not ever get that.
And then can we go back?
Damn.
Go back to the athletic director, the school athletic activities director. So like on page two?
Yep.
And maybe I missed it, but coach number twenty-eight, serve as manager for home track meets and tournaments. Is that just specific to track or were you meaning like call activities?
So that would, I mean, I would say that's, I mean, that that would not be just tracks, so if you have, ever have a home track meet, which we would be potentially hosting.
Yeah, right.
Baker.
Okay. But it's not intended just for track.
No, it would be like for the.
Can we specify that? Just to be clear.
Or serve as manager or?
Just take out track.
Yeah.
Home activities?
Home meets and tournaments.
I think you should take track out and that reads.
Okay.
And then number twenty-six on that same page, assumes leadership or on the orientation and in-service training of coaching personnel prior to the season, et cetera. Is there anything about their responsibility for evaluating the coaches? Did I miss that somewhere? Oh, yeah, okay, number six on page one, it's there.
Yeah.
I thought I had seen it, okay.
Not sure where I am.
Music, I haven't heard anything else to do with music, so let's go to close-up.
Okay, so what, do you wanna go to case six first?
Okay.
Just, I just wanna make sure, so we tried to spell out like what case six, those performance, so there's one fall performance, one spring performance, and then many performances throughout, like going over the senior center and those kind of things, so that, just simple expectation. But I'll quickly move to the next one. Close-up advisor, the biggest piece about close-up for our school is that it's an every other year trip. And so, well, is that at least an every other year trip, if not, potentially longer, it's not a every year trip.
Both of you were, have done.
Oh, I have misunderstandings. I've never gone.
Oh, you were probably, um.
I have to be the worker. I've never gone over to. They're usually industry teachers.
Yeah, if you're, and it really should be like a junior high or high school position. It's been really hard this year being in elementary and getting the kids, you know, to gather together and do, wanna do something for that. I mean, ideally, as this year teacher, so you can implement it into the program would, would be best.
And usually it does.
Yeah, it's been hard this year, being on the other side.
Yeah, being a grade school does nothing, it can do to work with projects over here at the high school.
Yeah.
That's why I did it, that's, she was a junior high.
Yeah.
So if it was under preferred qualifications, if we have a junior high, high school.
Yes.
We have ten people applying for it, then we're gonna start class.
Yeah, yeah, the schedule's not beat very well, you know.
Junior high, high school.
It's free to prepare anyone that wants to do it or somebody, but, and it is a great program.
And it's a five.
Yeah. So if you wanna change that valid teaching certificate to preferred instead of qualified?
Yes.
If you consider a parent?
I know, bring it some.
He didn't, he didn't say no right off the bat.
The look said no.
Anything else for close-up? FC LA?
So who's hard?
Yes, I will. I missed evaluation on close-up, so.
Yeah.
Well, that one has to, I guess I don't know about that one, yeah.
Which one?
FC LA. Does anybody have anything on FC LA? FFA. Journalism advisor?
I would say on journalism move, because that one does not directly, FFA and FC LA have to be connected. But journalism, we want it connected, but it may not be connected to the class. I mean, it could be the local newspaper guy potentially running that, so preferred qualification would be valid teaching.
I'm gonna pull Sam. Don't have to go backwards, but I think that under evaluation, we should put, or leave and say in accordance with board policy, and I can put in there five, two, 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 because it does talk about the fact that they just should be evaluated, given a copy of their evaluation, and it goes on file. That way we make sure that we always have those steps in process.
We do our policy.
Yeah.
Nice, sounds good. Thank you.
Thanks, I'm very excited. Five, two, 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 evaluation of non-administrative staff, which is everybody else. And it does talk about certified staff or by their CVA and so.
Thank you.
Lead teacher.
Hey, so remember, these two positions are defined in the collective bargaining added to that as far as, for all those. Tried to be as specific with those. In particular, the lead teacher on the bottom of the first page, the, the changing of the guard, if you will. If, if something, if there is no contracted administration or administrator, then the second piece kicks in there, if you will.
Is this where you speak?
On the mentor.
Oh, almost, okay. Anybody have, do you have anything on mentor before that?
Okay, then mentor teacher on page two, under number four, bullet three. Communicates with lead teachers, so did you wanna be in there too, Mr. Cafferty? Like this is a comment, so.
Where?
I didn't know if they, if you wanted them to report to you as well, or maybe you get a report from the leads on how the.
Um.
Yeah.
No, I mean, I would, I mean, it's, it's small enough that I'm not worried about that, but they're gonna be, that those first conversations are gonna be like, that's where the, the lead teacher would be coming to me, like with the pulse saying, hey, we got an issue here, we got teachers really struggling. Hope so.
That's all I know.
National Honor Society.
Hey, a little bit of a change to National Honor Society, but it has a high school and junior high component. And so, but other than that, everything else is pulled from the, Honor, National Honor Society website, but.
Any comments on that one? Student council advisor? That's the last one. Is there any public comment on job descriptions?
Say that one more time.
She does have that list, at least.
Helps develop and organize student cap assembly.
Just as, I mean, a student-led activities, we maybe need to find it as one.
Says they manage all student council events and activities, including planning, organizing, and supervising.
Rally is kept some things.
Where it says, right underneath.
Under three, bullet one. No, under homecoming, it'll just be number five.
Yeah, I just saw that.
Make sure that they give it up to somebody else, that's usually where it falls.
To make sure it happens.
Cheerleading is a used term, but cheerleading. Or very often, unless you get it on the one.
Any other public comment? There, any other discussion or motion?
Thank you for getting this prepared, whoever helped or created that one, thank you to everybody. I move to approve the job descriptions as presented with the changes we discussed tonight.
I will second that motion.
Sam made the motion to approve the job descriptions as presented with the changes discussed tonight. Stefan seconded the motion. Is there any public comment? Public comment? Word comment? Sam made the motion to approve the job descriptions as presented with the changes discussed tonight. Stefan seconded the motion. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Certified paying consideration.
So, um, we have a couple music teachers that we have been working with, actually the power of a conversation. So this conversation started on, we had this position open for two years. And on the ski trip, there was a conversation. two years, um, and uh, on the ski trip, there was a conversation, conversation about, well, maybe there's a couple people that would be interested, and so uh, I, I started that conversation and said, what could work, what might work? How could we have music for our kids, that led to step one, then there was a second conversation, then there was budget consideration conversation, and then there was a fourth conversation, so um, there, there was uh a, a, a deeper interview process for these teachers than anybody I've had on staff so far. They are tentatively going to, if approved, we would have music on Mondays and Thursdays in the afternoon. Peggy Biswell would teach our elementary kiddos, and Seeley Manis would teach our um, high school um, band and choir uh, on those days. We, we, we are aware of some situations where there, there might be some timeout, but as I told both of them, it's essentially easier to find a sub for music than it is to find a music teacher, so they'd both be quarter time, and I would recommend that. I would recommend that.
I appreciate the work into this and open, open mind to figure out how to get our kids some kind of music.
I don't know if anybody's ever been out to Methodist Rocks Church when Peggy's here for music, my god, it is amazing.
She didn't say anything on the piano, you just tell her, she just.
You hand her sheet music and it's there. She's good.
Is there any public comment? Public comment? Any board discussion or motion?
I move to approve the hiring of Peggy Biswell and Seeley.
Mm-hmm, Seeley.
Manes as music teachers for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
I'll say. Um, Sam made the motion to approve the hiring of Peggy Biswell and Seeley, you need? Manis.
I got some news.
The music teacher for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Uh, Lisa's second promotion, is there any public comment? Public comment? Board comment?
Oh, there's gonna be some excited kids, have music back.
Is that Sealy Kitchen?
Yes.
Yes.
Sam made the motion to approve hiring of Peggy Biswell and Seeley Manis as music teachers for twenty-five, twenty-six school year, Lisa's second promotion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Averyna, Averyna, did you hear that?
I'm sure, I'm sure.
She went off before that started. She gave me so proud of us.
Right.
Handbook approvals.
There they are, we've been from.
The only thing that we didn't talk about in the work session was I did include the two single pages, one certified page, one certified page, that had the recess added. And we took recess out of that student handbook, that chunk that makes more sense to go on the other two handbook, so I only included the one page that we whole pile. That's the random floaters at the back. Is there any board discussion?
Oh, just the daycare handbook was not approved by the daycare committee, it says that in here.
Or should I say approved?
And I think we talked about earlier, but it says a daycare handbook has been revealed and approved, it was just revealed.
Right. Yes, recommended for.
For approval.
Right. Any board discussion? Public comment? Public comment? Board discussion and motion?
I just have a question, um, so the changes we discussed in our work session or any additions, that needs to be in the motion.
Yes, please.
Okay, so.
The only note I remember is my line fifteen, page nine, more inclusive.
And your, and your daycare, and your daycare mine.
But we're not communication.
Yes, those are the two notes that I have.
Those are the two you have?
Mm-hmm. Transportation, trick, and then the ETS remind app, daycare. Did anybody else have any notes, but otherwise.
And then what was your transportation?
Oh, just to use more inclusive language in line fifteen, page nine.
Page nine, yep. It's not sure.
I think that was the only part that I saw, I thought it was.
Any other discussion or motion?
Certified and classified, is that?
Just, no, they'll just restate it, that's just adding.
Same, yes, that's, okay, yes, thank you.
Yep.
I'll move to approve the handbooks with the additions and corrections as stated in the work session.
Does that work? I would just say as stated in the meeting, yeah, we just restated them. Transportation line fifteen, page nine. Mike made the motion to approve the handbooks with the changes of on, for transportation on line fifteen, page nine. And with the changes in the daycare handbook to add the remind app, the communication. Any public comment? Public comment? Board comment? Mike made the motion to approve the handbooks with the changes in the transportation handbook, line fifteen, page nine. And in the daycare handbook to add using the remind app for communication, Phoebe seconded the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thirty-five ten P.
So, um, we worked, we reached out to MHSA to see what their actual policy, if they have guidance on that. And they really don't have guidance on bringing in new sports, and so we worked to find what that looks like, just so we have a process in place. With that, potentially there's one sitting on the desk in the office right now, um, but by students, uh, which is fun, but we need to have a process in place, uh, with wrestling being in the mix, all of these kind of things, as, as well as, who knows when professional, you know, high school pickleball will suddenly be the thing, but how we decide, how we, we start those, will we co-op, will we do those, um, if you look through this policy, it the, the beginning of that is a title nine component that we, we have to have in there, so that first little piece, now the disclaimer is what we have to have in there, next part about that is just watch it through, like what the, what the sports are. Then there's an, a, an initial review of that, and then um we look at, you know, starting to look through that process in, in numbers, so um whether we have more than eight students, over eight students, um, looking at that over a couple of years span, and then potentially where we go to for what our minimum would be to, to start a sport if we needed to, um, or look at that co-op part of that as well. Look at the bottom of, yeah, page two of that though, to try to put the, looking at numbers and put the, for individual sports and team sports. So minimum number of eight actively participating for two consecutive years, team sports, a minimum of ten competing for two consecutive years.
How many kids does it take to make a wrestling team? Do you know that?
How many?
Like how many points does it take, like, do you, you have to have so many kind of thing to have a team score, I should know that, I was just thinking, no.
It's kind of a track.
Is it, like golf is? I don't know, C is B was four, you had to have four scores.
So in page three, under item D, review and approval, it has the superintendent slash school board, so that means we would have to get.
Is it either, is it or or an and?
Yeah, I think that needs to be specified.
Over here, review the superintendent. And school board or or school board, and or?
I think it would have to be both because of the financial implications.
Yeah, so I think, I, I think I should say the superintendent and school board. So that's the first sentence, but then the second one again, how's that? Number C has.
Where are you at?
Oh, sorry, so formal application.
Got it. We got this back from MTSBA a little bit late, so I watched how this formatted into.
And this is the first reading.
Correct.
So.
Yeah, you have to have at least two things, so. As you call, there's a format, it's not normal policies.
An appeal process, assuming they would have to appeal to the board.
Apply for the hand, just for the fact that, that way they'll turn it in, so it can go on the agenda, versus them just show them to a board meeting.
Yep.
Is there any public comment? Public comment? Any other board discussion or motion?
I move to approve the first reading of thirty-five ten P with the changes discussed.
I second that.
Stefan made the motion to approve the first reading of thirty-five ten P first, uh, with the changes discussed tonight. Phoebe seconded the motion. Is there any public comment? Public comment? Board comment? No, we're not starting go. What's up? Said, no, we're not starting go. Stefan made the motion to approve thirty-five ten P's first reading with the changes made tonight, Phoebe seconded the motion. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now it's launched out there, like all, but. Superintendent survey, feedback survey, so my thoughts on this have changed a little, I don't know that I specifically only want superintendent, but more of a, a climate survey to help us as a district know how we're operating, know what we can do to improve and meet the needs. I did uh, reach out to MTSBA to throw my thoughts at them and try to help them, have me get some direction, and they did um, send me an option, and I think it's really good, it's something that has, where you can be certified, classified, parent, community member, or business owner. And it goes through and um like the, the first page is whether you strongly agree, don't agree, and it's questions like the school environment is one that supports our students, we have high expectations for our students, students embrace respect and diversity, there's other questions too, and then the next one is parents are actively involved, parents know what's going on, parents are aware of expectations. Those kind of questions. District supports collaboration among staff. Access to tools and resources, employees are treated, treated respectfully. Enjoy coming to work. Proud to tell others they're employees of the school. Next one is school administration recognizes employees for a well-done job. Administration and staff communicate with each other effectively. It kind of hits on every piece, I feel like, and then there's a board page also for do we recognize our employees for jobs well done? Our board trustees. The board of trustees hold themselves to the same high standards as their employees. Effective communication, community activity. I just felt like it touched a little bit of everything, something that we can um, customize to try to fill in the blanks as board members to get a better picture, since we don't live here day in and day out, like all the employees do. Give us some direction of where we can improve. And I'd like, if you guys get a phone call, it's probably usually the complaints and not the.
We don't see the good stuff.
Absolutely, yeah.
So you're more, not, not necessarily like a superintendent evaluation, but like a
A district.
Like a district for the administration, the school board, like how.
I think the word they use is a climate survey.
A climate survey, yeah.
So, I didn't know if that was something that.
Yeah, and where we saw all the feedback, I'm not just like a compilation, but I'd, I'd like to see like
I really, yeah, I really like this, I can have Brittany um, send it to everybody, and then I don't know go about it, but they are willing to administer it for us and customize it for us if we want them to, or we can do that ourselves.
I think we can do it ourselves.
We pay them, every year anyways. Is it part of our policy services that I'm to do? I will ask that question, but yeah, anyways, I thought it was I'd say if not, if I can, I could probably just send you guys a copy of that, and then it could come with the questions, did we like or don't like on there with earth or something, we think we need to add to it, there's a piece that like we're missing there. We should take out, or, and then we could finalize it in June and send it out, so we have it. We'd have re-report in July, I feel like July, we've done so good with all our handbooks. Like July's not. No, I'm sorry.
Like this summer, like, you know, the year kind of a survey.
That's what I'm saying, send it in June as like an end of year, so then we, we can review the results in July, is that what you? I thought if it could get emailed to everybody, then they can, you all can come with your thoughts on our June second meeting, and. Or you want to send some out before then, is that what you're saying?
No, I would just.
So then push the survey out like right after. So, and then push the survey out like right after our beginning, June second meeting, and then have the results by sort of July meeting, yeah.
Or, I mean, we could have, I mean, the only thing I would want us to think about is if we, which is, oh, quickly try to get a retreat date on the board. Because that, we would want that information for, for the retreat, if we're.
Oh, sure.
I mean, if, if it's June fifteenth for some reason, then we just want to make sure.
Well, can we just do like a quick Zoom? Can't, I don't know what's legal and what's not, can people just email their suggestions? And like push it out?
As long as they're not emailing them to the whole room.
They should email to me directly and not to each other.
Okay, why don't we do that, and then I'll get together with Brittany.
As I say, the only thing with parents, I was gonna say, is you probably want it sent out in this next two weeks, because at that point, I think they're gonna be pretty well checked out.
So, could everybody come up with what they are thinking by the beginning of next week?
You're gonna send us that.
I will send you that. Yes, I'll do it in the morning, I'll, we should put it with my bills.
I will do my best, the next two weeks are just a big ball right now, so.
But you can look at it, and you're like, that sounds good.
I'll look at it, and if you don't hear from me.
Drive, and you can.
I have a question, would the evaluation, like after it's compiled, need approval by the board before it is sent out? Because there's no motion at this point to do a climate survey. Do we have to have a motion to do a survey? I think, I don't know.
Why don't we just?
Maybe you don't, I.
No, you're not doing any, I mean, you're.
It's not affecting the financial, or anything of the.
So, after Brittany gets all her questions or whatever, she could send us all the template, we could all say, looks good.
I'll probably send you guys the survey to take, you guys can play through it, and then if it looks.
Yeah, because, I mean, I will say, if it goes out before the end of school, parent-wise, infinite campus.
Right.
We have, oh, an easier direct link to people.
And then, can we just, like Wednesday? Because that's the day. We'll have Wednesday, just not after two fifty. Not after two fifty.
That's our active drill, is the last hour.
I mean, next Wednesday.
Oh, yeah.
Because. Monday, amen for kindergarten and graduation.
Let's do it on Monday, okay. Yeah, as I say, we can send out at least a couple of days before.
I'll just come in early and. Because then we'll have it out before. Also, I'm gonna say this while she's sitting here, and she's probably gonna kill the interview herself, Fall Retirement Party is at four on Tuesday next week.
I won't cry yet.
I don't cry.
After trails end all day, right?
After trails end all day.
We just moved that one.
This is, but I'm hoping it's just gonna get rained out, pal, I want my kid to go so bad, but I'm like, just rain. So, anyways, if you guys can join us in the teleroom at four on Tuesday. Let's celebrate twenty-eight years.
Clerk evaluation. Adios, everybody.
He's gonna, he's gotta turn us off first.
Close the meeting.
Can I get water really fast?
Nope, that is the last, that's the last thing on our agenda. Thank you, Brandon.